In order, you will join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
And if you have one of these devices, if you please turn it to silent, we'd appreciate it not ringing during the meeting. And we call the role, we have our district attorney, Tony Pierce here today, supervisor of income, supervisor of bank, supervisor of binder, supervisor of guide will not be here today, supervisor of clarity, our district manager, Chris Schueker, and our CPA from the info room, Stephen Lee. And with that, I will turn it over to you for the budget portion.
Okay.
Go, or to you.
Yeah. Yep, so we just have, we have another version of the budget that Stephen has prepared for us. I had just kind of turned him over to comments from our previous workshop. The $10,000 RV revenue was removed, the $5,000 for the fountain maintenance. I did find an issue when I was going through it after in the staffing plan that one of the positions that carried over the incorrect rate, there was a stormwater specialist who we corrected that from 1224 to 126.
That's a big difference.
Yeah, yeah. So that did increase the waterway management budget a little bit, obviously just with the hourly rate as well as the benefits of it with it. And then I kind of, a couple of comments and thoughts to Stephen about, you know, extra money in that unassigned balance that we have on assigned funds and to use, you know, anywhere from 100 to 150,000 to kind of help offset some of the programs. And the increase, Stephen had put 120,000 of fund balance in this budget to help offset the operating. And there's still, the reserve amount is still at the higher amount, the transfer of the fixed asset reserves, that's something we could still play with as well. It did bring the increase down below 10%.
Question, just to make sure we're all on the same page. At the last meeting, we had a document entitled fiscal year 2020 proposed budgets in red version B. We now have version three. Is version three version C?
No, no. Last time was version two. Version B was the first two that were presented. This is just version three that is for this meeting, which just incorporates these changes.
Version two?
Yes, that was the last workshop. These changes that I just went over, those are the only changes really from version two to this one here, version three. You know, it's open for discussion. We could also go over Kenny and Lesley are here for the enterprise fund, anything on that. And then our next workshop is the next rating for the capital.
That's not entirely true. Right off the bat is the page in the summary assessment chart. The EAU count has gone up. How does the EAU count change between now and the last meeting? I'd like to see when we do this, and we see, like I'm looking at version two, and it has 376.44 for the golf course at PP, and now it's 304. I know they didn't have any new goals. What happened? Then phase one commercial PP is 214 and it was 247 likewise, how did they, did something burn down? Or I'm sorry, 195, something built, 195 to 247. My whole deal is, is that we need some footnotes to explain these changes. We don't have anything to build on.
Okay, yeah, I can answer that question for you. Between the last discussion and version and now, we have a final file. We received the final file, went through it for the, to answer your question, yeah, we can add some footnotes to the bottom of it to show the difference. Matter of fact, we'll put the whole 8654, you know, moving forward, not just what changed. But I can tell you real quickly what changed for area one and two is like point one three in terms of a final calculation. For Pelican Preserve, there was a final, I think it was the unplatted that moved to platted, so we got the multiplier of.
Five eight, five in.
Right, and then there was one, I think it was one parcel that was in the golf course section and was not, did not have a per EAU amount from the last version that we got, and we put it in there to get it correct. So that was really it. But we'll footnote it at the bottom right there under where it says difference. We'll put an entire footnote that shows how you add up the entire 8654. And I've mentioned 8654, that's the total difference, you know, from both Pelican Preserve and area one from this budget compared to last year's adopted budget. It's not going to be, you know, from version to version, it's just between from budget year to budget year.
And the 8654 is the 2019 final?
Correct, right. And the reason why I say that is, you know, these assessment rules really are kind of an ongoing, you know, adjustment as we keep getting them. Now, I say final, but it really isn't final, it's final between now and when we submit it. So really, like you said, the true, you know, way of doing this is to keep footing it as it goes.
Yeah, if you can provide that, that would be clear. That would clarify, that was my numbers are not the same. And then the age old deal that we've been talking about, that I've got a real, real problem with, having done a lot of research, I see no justification whatsoever for the 349.69 charging the PP golf course for that. We've got the 2003 and the 2013 bond issue, and both of them specifically say the golf course and the town center are exempt from bond assessment. I just hate continuing to do something wrong. We pulled out the bond transcript, and we have it here, somebody has a doubt about it, but it's quite clear. Thanks Steve, Mike's read it, I think everybody's read it. It clearly says that the golf course and the, not the clubhouse, the golf course, which is about 377 acres, clubhouse is about 8.92, and town center, which is what, 17, 18 acres around there, whatever, both of those are exempt from debt service.
Well, let me just clarify, because we are looking at a summary chart. This is the total EAUs. That is not the same as the EAUs that are being assessed on debt service. And the reason why I tell you that specifically.
This is their operation and maintenance assessment EAUs.
Correct. For Pelican Preserve for the golf course, because I did verify this, only 18, only the golf course clubhouse, one parcel, is being charged debt service for 18 units, which represents 18 holes, and that's per the methodology. So what I'm trying to say is that 384.54 that's shown there as the total EAUs for golf course, that's O and M, that does not equate to debt service.
Okay, so then 3454 is not multiplied times 1243.47? The addition of the debt money.
Not for 100% of the 384 now. I mean, there is.
We need clarification of that, because if anybody is looking at this would assume that every other one, it is that way.
Well, and what we're trying to do with the summary is to best summarize O and M and try, because there's a lot more columns that go into this. And, you know, we've even tried to do that with some of the debt service, when you look at the detailed chart that's on page three, you'll, you can see where the debt service shows up, so.
What would you be looking at, Stephen, that, better yet, what would I be looking at, tell me what you just told me?
The methodology will tell you the unit count, and then.
Where in this, where in this budget would I go to see that the income projected from, on the PP side, is not equal to 384 times 1243?
Okay, there's two places.
That's four, four thousand bucks.
Right, two places that you could go to. One would be, I'm just going to give you pages right now.
Okay.
Kind of take a look at it. Page 14 has just the O and M, that's page 14 of the package, 24 of, excuse me, 24 of the agenda package, that's one piece.
What of the book, just the book itself?
The book itself is 24.
Page 24. And what line?
And then, so you've got the first three lines.
Page 24 is the book is enterprise fund, that makes sense.
It's page 14 of the budget.
14 of the budget, okay.
One more.
Yeah, you got 14. What is?
Right there. Yeah, yeah, it's 24 of the agenda package, agenda book.
Page 14 of the book.
14 of the handout, I guess that was available. So the first three lines.
Yes.
And then if you wanted, then the second piece of that is the debt service. And that's on page 29 of the handout and 40 of the agenda book.
So if I take, just make sure I understand this, if I take each of the EAUs in the PP side, for example, 1016 residential phase one, multiply it times 1064, add to it 242 times 1151, 214 times 395, 12 times 395, 1253 times 893, and X times something, I would get the sum of these numbers over here.
If you, if you knew.
If I knew, if I knew what that number was.
Yeah, it's just, it's just another column. Tried to hide a couple of these columns just to get this chart on the page, but there is a, basically, there's a separate column that we have in this chart that shows only debt service EAUs, and if, you know, we can certainly.
I'll drop it on the basis that we understand.
I can send you the.
That the golf course is only paying debt on the building, the clubhouse itself.
That's correct.
And not the, the grass, nor the town center.
Just the one parcel for the, for the golf course clubhouse for 18, what I'll call units, which represents 18 holes.
That brings up a whole different name, because it's, it's only, I think it's 8.92 acres.
Well, that, I mean, again, this is per the methodology, because there's a separate methodology that was done specifically for it.
Okay, okay, that's all I get on that.
Continue.
It's just open for you guys to discuss.
Yeah, the, today we're predominantly talking reserve, capital reserve, correct?
No.
I'm sorry?
No, just the O and M for the general fund made a first one.
Oh, I thought today was the day we talked about the reserves.
Capital is the next meeting, next workshop.
Next week, no. I had the capital reserve. I didn't have anything on the O and M deals other than I'm concerned that we're spending and dipping into the reserve, whatever you want to call it, I'm assuming is leftover funds from last year, we're dipping into that to offset what looks to me like a ridiculous number of trying to keep 10.3 from being 9, or 9.8 from being 10.3. That's, that's insane. I hate seeing those reserves used for that, when we have both operation costs that are unexpected every single day, and capital costs that have to be done, I hate dipping into that. Now, if we wanted to dip into the building, I'm sorry, the, what do you call it? The fiasco out, out east, the.
Storage facility?
Storage facility funds have added. That's, that's history, but I hate using reserve funds. That's all I got.
And now this, now we are taking our reserve funds, of course, that would go to reserve, but this is just, we have about $400,000 last year, just for being under budget and, you know, collecting on miscellaneous revenues and stuff, so of course it rolls into that pot, but we were trying to come up with a way to help with offsetting it from last year. And, you know, if we wanted, if you guys wanted to assign 350 or 500,000 to a type of reserve for like stormwater cleaning or projects like that, it's always an option.
Mr. Bates?
No, I'm fine.
Mrs. Blair?
No, I'm fine.
And I didn't have anything on the end of the present.
It's easy.
It was easy. So.
All right.
Then, we'll adjourn the workshop, we can go to regular meeting.
Why is women at the podium always at your workshops? Whatever's on the agenda. Nice job.
Man, Chair, we do have one item, I sent copies to the board member to discuss with the other day about a lead county reclaim water use permit they sent to us, and I'd like to see if we could just get that into the agenda today as an action item for discussion, if you still want to go forward with that resolution.
No, when that comes up, I would like to discuss it and possibly table it, depending on what happens, it's all the way around to the calendar.
Well, let's go ahead and address that now, without any objection, go ahead and add this to the agenda now, since we have a little bit of extra time.
You're great, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that. Chris, Kenny, you can jump in any time. From June 19th or 20th, the district received out of the blue, a permit from Lee County for reclaimed water, which indicated an allocation that was about half of what we're getting now and less than what's allowed under the agreements. It said we had 30 days to file an objection, or if we didn't file the objection, then the decision on that permit was final. As y'all know, we have the multi, I call it the multi-passage, multi-transactional agreement for Lee County, where the utility plant was sold, the wholesale reuse agreement, wastewater agreement, groundwater agreement. They were in place for 30 years, but automatically new for 30 more years unless the district decides paternity. The permit that was issued by the county staff was inconsistent in many, many ways with the agreement as far as the rights to use, the rights of the district and to use now based on Lee County. Chris sent an email to county staff, of the utilities director and the program coordinator that sent the permit, outlining the concerns, initial concerns, and also sent copies of all these things, and said we'd like to have a meeting. And then Kenny followed up with some phone calls to county staff, and there was no such thing to respond, and there was no meeting set up. So because of the time constraints, the 30th day arguably could be today, so we filed the, I filed the objections with staff's assistance in preparing it yesterday for sort of the rights of the district. I received an immediate response from Michael Jacob, deputy county attorney, saying we did not know the CDD had any concerns, and on and on, we don't plan on turning in those agreements, if you like it, you keep it, just very, it's not basically, what are you guys doing, we don't plan, and I wrote back this morning on June, and I have a copy just for the information, also a copy of, not the whole thing that we filed, just the letter with the, the base attachment, so you all have it if you're leisurely reading. And then I wrote back to Mr. Jacob this morning, and sent him a copy of the emails that Chris sent to the county staff, and some excerpts from the agreements as to the rights of the district, and saying, again, repeating what I filed, we put in our objections, and no fire notice was given to the district or staff, that the county was planning and taking this action. So the county, in family ties, the keys, apparently he has reached out to Kenny, Chris by email, and Chris, Kenny got a call from two individuals in public utilities, saying, hey, let's meet, let's discuss it, and.
Did they say it was a mistake, or how did they characterize it?
Kenny, a little manager?
It was made in haste, as they put it, that they were unaware of the existing agreement, and that they kind of rushed through it and would rather us sit down with them, and one of you said, sit down with myself and the mission manager to go over the actual agreement and what we use versus, which is everything, we use everything that they have.
Yeah, so when was that?
Today? Say about 1:30? It's afternoon?
So it sounds like it's now back on the right foot, and so I appreciate the assistance of the staff, and Chris's email of the 27th, which sort of laid out the issues, and went to family ties for keys and Mr. Mendez. The objection is still at record, so we need to figure out how to resolve that with them, because, again, we didn't want to be in a position, we didn't file the objection timely, and then there was a catch-up. So we put our stake in the ground, and I think we have the county's attention on that, so.
Yeah, I'd like to see, sometime, not right now, but I'd like to see the original letter that came out on this.
Oh, it's attached.
Okay, because I, I contacted Cecil this morning, and immediately after contacting him, well, first of all, he said, and Tony, he said, you are just wrong, dead wrong, it was never our intent to do anything like this, we agreed to honor the agreement. Said that right off the bat. And my deal is, I said, Cecil, I don't have all of the information, but I do have enough to tell you that is categorically not what we were told by your staff. He then said, give me a minute, you will have a correction. Pan keys, then sent me a copy of an email that the attorney had prepared, and now all of a sudden, they've done a complete 180, and the contract is going to be adhered to, they're not going to change any of the conditions of the agreement, the reused water that was ours is ours at least to 2033, and as Tony said, it's renewable, so it still hell freezes over. They aren't getting the water. But what bothers me is, is that it looks like we have spent three weeks chasing a goose because we didn't make the right phone call right off the bat. This is frustrating.
Yeah, well, I guess.
Because we knew it was wrong. Somebody, a junior peon in the county, and my guess maybe this was purposeful, that somebody, a lot of times people throw out and see what sticks. If they buy it, they'd be a nice buy it, that kid's probably going to get a double, triple raise, because of the fact he just saved them millions and millions of gallons of water. But what's frustrating to me is the boss that supposedly signed the letter acts like she didn't know anything about it. Tony indicates that he put in a request, or I don't know, Chris, one of the two, put in a request June 27th?
27th, the email from Chris.
27th, and they didn't respond. My deal is, when they do that stuff, that's what Cecil's here for. One phone call stops that stuff. Nothing a bureaucrat hates more than to be reprimanded. And it's somebody down there needs to be reprimanded, but I think at this point in time, because of the timing, I would recommend that Tony prepares a letter on the CDD's behalf to the county indicating that based upon Mike Jacob's letter of last night before 26 PM, we are of the understanding that the county is not going to renege on our longstanding 2003 wastewater and reuse agreement, and that we hereby withdraw our objection unless and until you change your mind again.
I don't agree with you.
You might, you might.
We've got, we've got to get on record of releasing that.
But we get withdrawn.
My, my concern is a couple, I understand, and I've worked in the local government realm for a bazillion years, I understand communicating and political resolutions of matters by talking to the county commissioners and council members, et cetera. However, in this instance, because of the way the ordinance reads, and the way the letter, purple letter reads, if no objection is filed within this period, this permit is deemed to be accepted, and the ordinance also says you can't do anything more after that. And I'm not sure if they could technically quote-unquote withdraw the permit that they issued, it's awkward. We have our objection of record. I think we're going to be having a meeting shortly, or in the next couple of weeks with the utilities and county attorney's office to formulate and come back to the board. I think, I'd like to have the county commission say that disagreement will be honored. My concern is staff changes over time, and I've been in too many situations where a person made a representation at a staff level, people acted on that, and then later on, new staff comes in and says, that person didn't have the authority to do that, you need to go to the board, you need to go to this committee, you need to go to the council. I've had that happen too many times, people come to me too many times and get burned like that. It happened to me one time, and that's all that happened, one time. So I, I don't respect.
My, my deal is, is we have a letter from their attorney saying that they were wrong. What else do we want?
We, we want to have, I think, a more formal document, that's why I want to talk to them about provided, the county attorney and the county manager, and if needs to come from the chair of the county commission, saying, hey, we honor these agreements. I mean, it's something we, I think we need to talk about with the county staff. Mike, you know, again, has the board delegated authority to him to say we're going to honor those agreements. And that's, and to my, from my perspective, I recommend we table that resolution that proposed, that chapter 164 dispute resolution process, resolution, and let the staff meet with the county and formulate a way to take care of this about deprecating the district and services. I mean, again, the fact that Chris sent the email June 27th to Mr. Mendez and to Miss Keys, he never replied. And in that email, he sent them copies of all these agreements, in that email, he articulated them the concerns, in a global basis, and nobody's responding. So that, yeah, gave me pause of that, you know, when that happens, if they had responded then, say, oh, yeah, we made a mistake, you know, forget that, we're going to honor it, silence, crickets, as they would say in trade. So I don't need to come across harsh, but I just.
I already saw the agreement of suspending, doing any, taking any further action, because I, my ear got burned today that we did this. But I usually pretty well take and believe not what I hear coming from a politician, but what he writes it in the King's English. I believe it.
Oh, I don't, I doubt.
And this is coming from an attorney, not a, what do you call it, staff person.
And I believe Mr. Pendleton, Paul Harvey, he's a man of his word, but under the ordinance, there's a program director, a program coordinator, and a public utilities director, there's a water review committee, there's people are designated, county manager, to implement that ordinance. So that's why I think we need to talk to the staff.
My problem is I haven't had, didn't have access, and when we get this from now on, as a board member, I'd like to see this stuff when it's fresh, not when it's cold. This has been out for 30 days, I'd like to see these documents, because something, this is just fishy. When you have an agreement that you've had and been on your 16th or 17th year of the agreement, and this isn't the first time Lee County, Lee County Utilities has tried this stunt, I've had at least three amendments they've tried in the last five, six years, all coming through the same individual.
They've, we've had discussions, I have separate folders in my electronic filing system. Lee County Utilities issued 2009, 2013, 2016, now 2019.
That's right, they're three.
Yeah, we proposed amendments, and they came back with more egregious amendments.
Well, the point I'm trying to get is, is this, this ordinance they approved, does it physically say in it that the gateway contract is going to be superseded by this permit?
No, what it says is all agreements will be transitioned permits within, I think, three years.
Well, see, I have any trouble with that, because the agreement stipulates that all the water comes to us. I'm worried about what you had told me, Chris, that gets my attention, when they said it was reduced to 743.
Right here.
That's a different, that's a different deal.
And the permit that was received, flow allocation, 742,000 gallons per day.
Well, then that is not consistent with the.
And additionally, there's other conditions in that permit about rate skis and charges that are different than our agreements also. I mean, there are a number of.
Well, again, it would be nice to have that and know what this is all about, because I think Cecil needs to be aware of what's going on, that somebody down there stepped on their yin yang, this is ridiculous. Why would they even try something like this, when we have yelled and yelled before that we are not giving up one drop of our reused water? We're using two and a half, three million gallons of water during peak season, and we're getting a million and a half out of that treatment plant. They took it to 743, we're going to spend several hundred thousand dollars of drilling more wells.
In addition, if you recall, and this is very helpful, provided by Chris, the modification to your consumption use permit, water use permit from South Florida issued just a year and a half ago, the groundwater withdrawal allocation was reduced premised upon a million gallons per day. So, I mean, he actually went back to South Florida and says, hey, modify our permit, extend it out, reduce our groundwater based upon what the county was giving greater than the 743.
But that's another issue, because we didn't keep them in tune as to what the area of where we're irrigating, they had something, I guess, 846 acres, and we're well over 1,000.
But that's, but that's not relevant to permit application, it says withdrawal, groundwater is being reduced because we're getting more than we count.
Mr. Bates?
I just, I think we're in a position right now where council's taken appropriate action, staff has actions in play. I think we, we've replied within the time limit of our prejudice to the document. I think we've raised it to Cecil, he's aware, if nothing else, we'll let the process proceed. And if anything else, it'll be an opportunity for us to, again, document or renew the pre-agreed agreement that we had in place to refresh it, because I don't know how many people are sitting in that office that were there 16 years ago. So, I understand, snap to remember, but.
The key ones are there.
Yeah.
The key ones are there.
But the fact that that was overlooked, I think is an internal process issue, but I think. But I think this will get worked out. We'll go back to the business as usual and there will be five.
Do you have anything else on that?
No, and so I think, again, motion to table would be appropriate, uh, the resolution and, and staff, I'll press staff to continue pursuing conversations with Lee County about the resolution of this.
And we'll add one thing. I do think Ed had a really, had a point, though. When we do get some of these things that come through, we follow the normal process, um, but Cecil's in place for a reason. And I think there, you know, there may, may be an opportunity to make him aware in, in the future, just because, you know, we shake that tree and, and should fall.
Okay, Mrs. Flaherty made a motion to table that.
Just a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any of those? Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any, anything further coming down the line on this, I'd like to be copied on that. Be copied on it, just to see it when it happens because this is, I can see them trying some things. They should be trying, if I were in their position, but they're taking on stuff that they, and they go with.
Well, we probably would have found out about at least two weeks ago. You know, if we would have had the regular standing board meeting, so that's probably one of the reasons for the, for the update delay, but I.
Yeah, it didn't really look on the agenda package.
Mrs. Flaherty? Okay, I would also like, I think we should all have a copy when things come in, so we do know what's going on.
It, it looks like Tony has both a copy for us, what appears to be the.
Guts of it.
The guts of it.
Without all the attachments, I didn't think you wanted the other hundred and forty pages, so.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to audience comments.
We only had two speaker cards today, and Mr. Brand was one, and, uh, Mr. Brand said you can prefer to be called as needed. And the other speaker was Avery Demming. Mr. Demming?
I'm the only one, huh, today? Well, uh, thanks for the opportunity to, uh, speak. I appreciate you guys, you fellow officers here, putting up with all of this stuff. I have no idea what you've been talking about and I'm glad I don't have to try and compensate or comprehend all of that. Uh, I've been away from the litoral issues for a couple of months. I was to Russia for two and a half weeks, that trip there, a few other things. But anyway, I'm back to it. Do I, and I understand, tell me if I'm right, that the five-thirty meeting today is a public forum to vote on a new maintenance code for the count, uh, the maintenance code for the district for litorals and lake management?
It's, it's a public hearing.
Hearing?
So that we get input from.
And then you will vote at what time? I'm going to be asking a couple of questions here to clarify. When do you get to vote on the final?
I'm going to ask the whole thing to be top down, so I don't know that there's a need for a vote. That's going to be my motion.
I see, I, okay, we don't have to.
So there may or may not be action.
But it may not be action, but the public was, tell me, tell me a question then. Will the Hampton Park issue be addressed at that meeting directly because of the document being considered by you?
I, I live directly is the right terminology. I think that the standard could apply to Hampton Park.
That's okay. If it applies, then it's, as far as I'm concerned, that's an indirect application because that's applying to all of the lakes, all sixty-eight lakes.
And it would be pertinent for someone to speak directly about an issue, let's say, in Hampton Park, and how that applies to the standard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because then, uh, what I'm saying is we wouldn't be reviewing all the details of the Hampton Park case, uh, in that discussion at five-thirty. Am I right in saying that?
The only issue I see that has Hampton Park that could be resolved without a change, uh, in the standard would be a supplement or an amendment to the standard that was attempted three years ago, but never got proven aboard, that addresses the issue of development order, litoral placement, and property owners wanting to come in and petition to have litorals removed. That could be easily done by a one-page addendum and it addresses everything in Hampton Park.
That addendum is, is it addendum to the new code, you're saying?
No, addendum to the old code. Addendum to the old code.
Okay, I, I would have to learn more about what.
It's basically, sure, there, there could be a solution to an existing problem by amending or having an addendum to the existing policy without having to approve a new one.
But the whole idea of rewriting the pond standards was that we weren't going to have an addendum. It would be one complete document.
Right, right.
So that doesn't really solve the issues.
Well, the issues are, there are things that are in the standards, that are, in the revised standards, they're totally unacceptable.
Uh, tell me this, uh, Tony, is a lawsuit still active from Justin?
There's no lawsuit that I'm aware of.
I thought the.
His attorney threatened litigation.
C D D was being sued by Justin because of the Hampton Park.
To my, to my knowledge, the district's not yet concerned with any lawsuit, whether one's been filed, I can't tell you unless I take.
Or why, why do I think we've been sued? Okay.
We've just gotten.
I guess not.
Demand or demand.
There was discussion of that and I thought sue had, had happened.
No, there was a demand letter a while back and.
A demand letter?
Yes.
What is a demand letter? Sorry?
Demanding that the district takes certain action.
Is that from a lawyer?
Yes.
Okay, a demand letter?
Yes.
And how do we respond to that demand letter?
We have not responded to the demand letter. I don't think it deserves a response.
Ah, okay, now, so there's no.
Although then the district is not doing anything wrong from a permitting, development order, and agency perspective.
And, uh, so that means leaving litorals at Hampton Park as is. Is that what that means by not responding?
That's a board decision as to what action to take. That's not a legal decision.
That's the addendum I was referring to, Avery, that they resolved that issue.
Um, well, um, okay, so no lawsuit, just a demand letter that I filed. And there is then, uh, the board has a discussion to how to respond to that.
And if you could write your comments to the chair and the Carol, which that person should answer.
I, I know how this works, so sorry.
It's okay.
She's the boss.
Well, okay, in terms of response then to a demand letter, how about that? Okay, can I speak to that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, our response should be, uh, that we leave the litorals as they are in Hampton Park with proper maintenance, of course, to them. And a number of reasons why. Can I go over those for everyone?
You've got your five minutes.
It's running close, I'm sure. Uh, first of all, uh, uh, we have a complaint by one individual who wants to go fishing in his backyard and it had, he was cited. It had transpired or spiraled out of control and, uh, then all during that process of him being unhappy, he was cited by the county because he removed his, remember all of this? I'm not sure if you do, but anyway. Uh, he was cited by the county for removing his, uh, Lenar came in and wanted to turn over everything to you guys, the C D D. So they fixed the problem and, uh, eventually, of course, Hampton Park was turned over officially. Well, he, uh, was still unhappy and this individual found out, of course, that the old, uh, original D O called for sectional planting of, of litorals. I call it sectional planting, there's another term for it. I forget what it's called, but anyway. In fact, what was done, the county or, uh, W C I had messed up the plantings to begin with. That's why they weren't approved in early two thousand and eight. They screwed it up, they didn't plant the right amount, they didn't have the trees, all sorts of issues the county had. So the county and, uh, now Lenar had to agree on what would meet code so they could apply and get it approved. Well, that, uh, all of that added up to what is now planted in Hampton Park. And that it was, added the trees and they added a more of a distributional planting, is what I call it, where they plant all the way around the bank. So, also, since, uh, uh, the D O was approved under an old code, I forget the exact date, but the old county code was around two thousand. The new code came along in two thousand and nine, all right? It was approved, the D O for Hampton Park was approved in two thousand and six or two thousand and eight. The new code came in two thousand and nine and now we have a turnover, uh, ten, two thousand and eighteen of this old D O. Well, uh, and, uh, the planters, the people planting the plants, the W C I and Lenar screwed up. So now what are you going to do? Well, you're going to negotiate with, uh, the county and W C I and fix the problem as best you can. Well, it was fixed as you see it today, as is, planting, uh, the litorals as they are today. Ninety percent of the owners of homes are happy with the way it's planted. Now, that's a survey done by us. Seventeen percent of homeowners were surveyed who have litoral views, uh, backyard views, and, uh, they signed petition that we had. And, uh, that's a survey, of course, of four hundred homeowners. You can extend that out to the full four hundred people and you would get some ninety percent that would approve, uh, the view of the litorals. So with that, I'll, I'll be finished.
Okay, thank you, Avery.
Thank you.
Chris?
It's already in the card.
Yep.
Mr. Brand?
Thank you. Um, James Brad in Hampton Park. I want to follow along with what Avery was saying. On June the sixth, I believe, at this meeting, I presented a document. It was a subset of Hampton Park's H L A declaration. The H L A declaration was written in two thousand and five. It is filed properly with the state of Florida. So my question, one question is, does the Hampton Park H L A master declaration have any legal standing? It states that no owner or other person shall disturb, remove, alter, in any way, disrupt vegetation on the Hampton Park storm lakes. So does that have any legal authority or are we all just dependent upon Gateway C D D? What about every homeowner, when they buy a home in Hampton Park, when they get their title, they're required to sign a document that says they read and understand the H L A declaration? And the H L A board has the authority to find residents?
That's correct.
And they do?
And your, your H L A documents pertain to the H L A, but they aren't an enforcement vehicle for the C D D.
It also pertains to the storm lakes.
Yes.
To the lakes. And it's, it states that lake banks shall not be bare. So this, are you, and I believe you all have the same perspective.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, but we don't have, we aren't, we aren't an enforcement agency for H L A documents?
Well, my question isn't whether you're an enforcement agency, but does it, the H L A declaration have standing? Or is it completely obvi-, you know, eliminated by your standards?
So maybe, I mean, the response is that the Declaration of Confederates is a co- contract among the individual property owners excluding the district as the owner of the stormwater management system. And the ability to enforce that contract among the property owners is upon the property owners and or the association, depending upon the language of the covenant. It's not up to the district to enforce, please, I'm monitoring those covenants.
And can you go further?
I'm not asking you to enforce, I'm asking.
Can the H L A enforce regulations on something that they don't, that they don't own?
You mean like the lakes park?
Yeah.
They can, they can have certain, uh, they have certain regulatory abilities, I mean, in our community, you can't, I think they have certain ability. Again, I don't.
I think, to, to this point, can you, can you enforce the regulation in your covenants if there's destruction of property that you don't own?
Yeah, I think, I think that's an answer, a letter, an opinion letter provided by the attorney for the H L A.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a thing.
And if, there's not a clear cut answer, then I'm fine.
My guidance and advice is to the board, to my client, I'm not advising the H L A or the President of the county after their covenant.
Does that be a question for your attorney?
All right, thank you. Uh, so then the next question that comes, Doug made the comment that, uh, the Gateway C D D owns the storm lakes. Does that include the banks of the storm lakes? The, the bank starts at something called.
We have a twenty-foot L M A. And we have restrictions on the use of that, like you can't put a building, you're not supposed to put a tree. And we've had several instances where people come in who have done that, that we have granted exceptions where it doesn't interfere with the operation and maintenance. But there are specific exclusions.
Controlled elevation.
I'm sorry?
Something called the controlled elevation.
Twenty feet above the control elevation all the way around.
Twenty feet above, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure without looking at the plat, so the conveyance, I think we own some lake, be simple, some lake tracks, I can double check. And I'd have to look at that to determine what the extent of that boundary of that track is. I'm not sure.
And, and like behind my house, I do not own all of the land all the way to the lake.
And that's.
My boundary ends at the top of the lake.
That's true for me as well. I knew of that.
So then that's owned by the C D D.
When your.
So then should not the C D D?
Owns yours where?
I do not own all of the land all the way to the water's edge.
You don't own to the control?
No, I have a, my property line ends before you get to the top of the lake.
Who owns then the difference between?
The C D D.
The C D D owns actually raw land.
Yes, round the lake, yeah, that's.
Well, I understand, I own the lake. That's defined as a controlled elevation.
Is it basically the easement?
Probably pretty close.
Jim, I thought yours was saying like.
I, I think we have an easement that I own, but that easement requires access and control.
Well, I think, I think it's the other way around, because I recall at Hampton, we looked at that so many times. I believe every one of the properties in Hampton go to the control elevation.
Right.
And then they have a twenty-foot back set.
That's easement.
That is a granted easement to the C D D.
That's right, it's easement, but the property owner still owns that land.
Oh, yeah. No, it's like anything else. The, the owner of the land is the, the owner. It's grants and easement.
So I think we established a couple of seconds ago that the lake banks are part of the storm lakes and therefore Gateway C D D owns the lake banks as well as the water in the lakes.
Well, the controlled elevation, I think, is.
The controlled elevation is.
The control eleva- elevation is where the ownership starts and stops and then the easement.
And the, and the controlled elevation is at the top of the lake bank.
The, the, the problem, the problem is, the problem is, this is where the part of the deal with the county, when we did the, uh, Carol Witz coming out three years ago. This whole nightmare.
She came in twenty eighteen.
I'm sorry?
She came in twenty eighteen, April.
Yeah. The issue is, the development order called for litorals to be not only in the pond from control down, it had requirement for litorals from control up. There wasn't one single litoral in any of the fourteen ponds from the control up, which would have been litorals on private property. They didn't put those in. They put in sod, just like they're doing almost every place else in this county. They put sod at the control elevation. So we really don't have an issue, in my opinion, on the point from the control up. Our whole issue is from the control down.
And that's my point, too, the controlled elevation is at the top of the lake bank. And you have a lake bank and you go down and you got water in it. Based on rain, stormwater range, the, the elevation of the lake can come up to a controlled elevation.
Well, it's not like it'll up, it'll go over because the minute you go one drop of water, but over the weir, it comes up incremental. And like when we saw the storm, we were up, uh, eighteen inches above control.
So when the water's down, you've got a lake bank and normally, like on my lake, I've got litorals all along the control elevation at that line. And we have a resident that, uh, Avery referred to who has removed all of the litorals and he's got a bare lake.
Well, I think Doug would be a correction match, you know.
Beg pardon?
He didn't remove it.
Yes, well, yes, he did. No, he removed them too.
We removed them.
He continues to remove them and we have video and we sent the video to, to.
I've seen it.
That's right. So the question I've got is, who's responsible for ensuring that the removal of those litorals on that lake bank doesn't take less? It's from the controlled elevation down, which we just determined you all own.
The pond standards address that issue. What the pond standards didn't address was how you accomplish that. And that's what the addendum was done, but the addendum's got a lot of fallacies in it.
So we have a public hearing in a, in a short time in which we'll be able to comment on it.
There'll be a lot of.
And modify.
Yeah, document, correct.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure for clarification also, we, from a legal perspective, we own lake tracks in Hampton Park. The plat does not show the control elevation. The, the plat shows a track of land, there we go. And on the back of some of those lakes, there is no, on lots, there is no easement. We own the lake track. And so how far that goes off the bank, I can't tell you from looking at the plat. So that, there's two different elements.
Are you looking at phase two or phase one?
This is phase. This is phase seven, for example.
Thank you.
Is there's a difference between the last four ponds and the first?
Anyone else?
Yes, every plat is different. The orders are pretty different.
All right, I'm going to move us to action items. Engineer. Hello.
I have two items and I wanted to update you, some action that took place this week. So the first item, I believe, is the lake bank restoration. There's a memo in the scope of services. This is for the design of the phase-two lakes that approved by the E P for, for the amount that we have in there. Essentially what these are, these are the, all of the lakes that are approved by the facilities plan in addition to Lake eighty-three, which is discussed as one that may be added[1773.91]